Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am David Vitale, President of the Chicago Board of Education, and on behalf of my fellow members, I welcome you to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is March 25th, 2015, and we are holding this month’s meeting here at the boardroom at 42 West Madison. We will follow regular order at today’s meeting, and Madam Secretary, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
(Inaudible)
Madam Secretary, please call the rule.
Thank you. Dr. Beenan?
Here.
Dr. Hines?
Here.
Board members up?
Here.
Dr. Escoitia?
President.
Board member Quazo?
Here.
President Vitale?
Here.
Six members present. There is a quorum. I would also like to recognize Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, our Chief Executive Officer, Mr. James Beverly, our General Counsel, Angel Diaz, and our shadow student this month, Tyler Portis. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will start this morning by having our honorary student board member, Angel Diaz, introduce this month’s shadow student.
Thank you, President Vitale. Today, we are joined by Tyler Portis, a senior from Grandland Brooks College Prep. Tyler will be sharing a few important things and an experience from CPS at his school. Tyler?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First off, thank you, President Vitale, Vice President Reeves, board members, Dr. Bird Bennett, and honorary student board member, Angel Diaz, for inviting me to be the shadow student for today’s meeting. My name is Tyler Portis. I attend Jane—well, I attended Jane A. Neil Elementary School, and now I go to Brooks College Prep, which is a selective and Roman school on the south side of Chicago. I’m proud to say both schools are indeed Chicago public schools. I am honored to serve as today’s shadow honorary student board member, not only because of how valuable it is to recognize a student’s role as stakeholders in the educational system, but also because I feel honored that I am trusted with a glimpse into the inner works of CPS. I promise to use this information I receive today to better the lives of the stakeholders, of parents, staff, the community, investors, and, most importantly, the students. Last year, while serving as local school council student representative at Brooks, I had an awakening experience learning about all the stakeholders at the school level. And this opened a door to the world of civic action and community service that I did not even know existed. But I immediately knew I wanted to be a part of it. Today, I am proud to say that I hold five leadership roles at Brooks. With every leadership role, I gain new experiences and skills. I also apply knowledge learned in classes like math and science to real-world applications. Just two weeks ago, I had to find X and Y for something completely out of a classroom context. With every experience comes a new skill set, and that is what I am ultimately here to gain today. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Tyler. You know, usually I have an opportunity to spend a little bit of time with our shadow students before the meeting, and I did again this morning with Tyler. And oftentimes, I have to—I try to explain what’s going on, what’s going to go on during the course of our day here. I didn’t have to explain it to Tyler. He already knew. Did his homework. It also turns out that Tyler is getting ready to graduate and go off to college next year. He—he—please. He’s been accepted at several, and he wouldn’t tell me what his choice was, but I’m marketing for one that I’m familiar with. But good luck, Tyler, in finishing up this year and with your college career. It’s great to have you here today. Appreciate it. Now, let’s take this opportunity to recognize some of our students who’ve been highly successful this year. Barbara?
Good morning, and thank you, President Vitale and members of the Board of Education. Our students make us proud every single day with their academic achievements, but the month of March is a particularly impressive one with our students taking top honors at city and statewide competitions. Let me start by recognizing our eighth grade student, Gerardo Amaro, from Bobin Elementary School, who placed first in the Chicago Public Schools Citywide Spelling Bee on March 13th. More than 44,000 of our students competed in the Citywide Spelling Bee this year at the local school level. The top finishers in their respective schools advanced to an online competition, and the top 50 of those students earned a seat at the citywide competition. Gerardo won in the 15th round of a spell-off against other competitors, and his winning word was pseudoscience. Gerardo will now represent Chicago Public Schools at the prestigious Scripps National Spelling Bee right outside of Washington, D.C. in May. So please help me to welcome Gerardo as one of our district’s second-place finishers—and I’m sorry, help to welcome him—and one of our district’s second-place finishers, seventh grader—I’m going to make sure I say it correctly—Wassim Rahman from—
I’m in the eighth grade.
Uh-oh.
That’s amazing.
Please welcome Gerardo as one of our district winners, but also our second-place finisher, eighth grader Wassim Rahman from Bell School. And I’d ask our two young people to speak.
Good morning, everyone. I’m so grateful and excited to be here. I’m so thankful for the opportunity to participate in these spelling bees, given the benefits that come with participating in them, particularly the higher-level ones like the city and national ones. I’m also grateful for the difficulty, believe it or not, for if they were any easier, there would have been no point in studying as much—in as hard as I did. I’m glad the word choices were hard enough to force me to study like I did, and the whole purpose of these bees is to learn more and expand your vocabulary, is it not?
Yes.
I was a little ticked off that I had so much homework that I couldn’t study very much some days, but I was still able to get enough in to win. I also have to give a major shout-out to my competitors. They were really good. They fought—or I should say, spelled until the end with an undying passion to win. Thank you all for this chance to expand my learning extracurricularly. Thank you.
Morning. I just want to thank all of the people who organized the spelling bee. Also, I want to thank my school, because without that, I wouldn’t have been able to get to this level, and my family for supporting me through the whole thing. Help me study. I appreciate that. It’s really been a great opportunity, and it’s—it’s an experience that I’ll remember, like, for the rest of my life, and I just—I’m really grateful that I was able to have this opportunity. Thank you.
I see also that some of the parents of the young people here, if you’d like to take an opportunity to say anything, we welcome you.
Thank you very much. We just want to thank you and the school and all the organization for this event, because, like you said, it really expands their knowledge, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was told by my wife not to talk too much, because I talk too much. It’s my second year here. I remember David Vitale. I remember Barbara. Thank you again for the opportunity. Also, I share the same DNA with Wassim, which I’m very proud of. The final reminded me of the rumble in the jungle with Muhammad Ali and George Foreman. It was—I’m a big boxing fan. October the 30th, 1974. Okay, you said a stop. It was a great battle. Thank you very much. Have a great day. I’ll stop talking.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Once again, this year, Whitney Young Magnet High School took top honors in both the city and the statewide academic decathlon, and will represent Chicago Public Schools in the national competition in California next month. Whitney Young finished third overall at the national event last year, extending our district’s remarkable 20-year streak of having top-five finish at that competition. The Whitney Young team is represented here today by—and I don’t—I hope I don’t mess anybody’s name up, okay—Jacob Gonzalez, Tyrone Ferguson, Trahan Hammonds, Jonathan Mark—Jonathan?
Marek.
Matthew Patrick, Melanie Sykes, Tayem Mingyo—almost—and Jerry Zhang. Okay? Great. Please join me in recognizing the accomplishments of the Whitney Young team. And is there a team representative who would like to say a few words? Okay.
All right. I’m Tim Yu.
And I’m Matthew Patrick, and we are the captains of the Whitney Young Academic Decathlon team.
First of all, we would like to thank the board and the Office of College and Career Success for inviting us here today. The Academic Decathlon has offered us not only an opportunity to compete at the city, state, and national levels, but also a chance to learn about fascinating subjects and to become closer as a team.
For the past 30 years, the Chicago Public Schools have been represented at the national competition for Academic Decathlon, and we’re very proud to be able to continue that tradition. And we greatly appreciate the support that we have from the board, and we hope that it continues to—the board continues to support all of the academic programs that challenge the students every day. Thank you. Oh, what was it?
Let me just say, I think, on behalf of all the board members, congratulations, and we’re really proud that you’re going to be out there representing us in California, and good luck. We know you’ll do well.
Thank you.
Thank you once again. Finally, I am pleased to recognize the top performers from the 65th Annual Chicago Public Schools Student Science Fair last week held at the Museum of Science and Industry. Every year, this event is a showcase for some of the brightest young minds in science. Chicago Public Schools is proud to send four of our students to present their science projects at the International Science Fair in Pittsburgh in May. They’ve joined us here today. I’d like to welcome Marcelina Puck, a senior from Lane Tech. I’m really going to try this name. Bolajija—say it again? Balaji, the last name?
Apakalay.
Apakalay? Okay. A senior at Lynn Bloom Math and Science Academy. Stacy Lamb, a 12th grader at Von Steuben Metropolitan Science Center. And Alexander Pei, a senior at Whitney Young. Help me to welcome these young people. In addition, please welcome Jose Manuel Hernandez, a junior at Keery High School, who will represent our district at the State Science Fair in Southern Illinois University on May 1st. We’re also joined today by Lucero Varela, a senior at Lakeview High School, who represented our district at the White House Science Fair just this past Monday. Congratulations to each of you on your success, and I thank you so much for taking time from your school schedule to be with us here this morning. And if there’s anybody here would like to tell us, please, about their project, we would really want to hear.
Hello, my name is Alexander Pei, and I’m a senior at Whitney M. Young Magnet High School, and I’m proud to represent CPS, Whitney Young, and the United States at the largest pre-collegiate science fair, which is Intel International Science and Engineering Fair 2015. And I would just like to thank the board of CPS, my teachers, Ms. Anna Gallardo, Dr. Lynn Muhammad, and my professors, Dr. Kathleen Goss and Dr. Mark Bissonette.
Thank you.
And my project is the role of Mir 143 in intestinal APC min mice, and the topic is colorectal cancer.
My name is Marcelina Poots. I’m representing Lane Tech. The title of my experiment was the epiphtotic mechanism of colloidal silver and bromalin on PC12 and HeLa cells. I would like to thank the board for supporting the science fair, city science fair, for providing all the opportunities we have, and for supporting Lane Tech through our Alpha Program. Ms. Catherine Anderson, Dr. Christopher Dignam, for always allowing us to have these opportunities to grow in our research. And more than anything, thank you for allowing us to gain these mentors and all of these new experiences.
Congratulations.
Good morning, everyone. I’m Stacy, and I’m representing Von Steuben. It’s an honor being here, and first and foremost, I would like to thank my school, Von Steuben, my teacher, Mr. Yurik Halliday, for just supporting me throughout this whole process, CPS Science Fair, the board, for just giving us the opportunity to start science fair and have projects that were mandatory, and then to come out leaving as innovators. And my project is on just having used vegetable oil and converting it into biodiesel. So I’m looking into the two chemical components, methanol and hydrogen peroxide, and what I’m doing is just trying to see how the ratio would affect the amount of biodiesel being made, the amount of glycerin, and the quality of the biodiesel.
Good morning. My name is Balaji, and I’m representing Lynn Bloom. I would like to thank the board for recognizing our projects, my teachers at Lynn Bloom, especially Ms. Copper, my science teacher. I would like to thank the University of Chicago for providing me a lab to work in. My project was about how contaminants affect lung surfactant, so I worked with C60, which is a carbon-based pollutant, so—to see how it affected the lung surfactant system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jose Manuel Hernandez. I’m a junior at Keery High School, and I’d like to thank the board for honoring us all here. We all worked very hard for most of the year to have our research and our projects ready for the science fair. I dislike my fourth year participating at science fair. I do it for fun every year, because I love science and I love representing my school. I’d like to thank Ms. Patterson, my teacher’s sponsor, and Mr. Perry, my principal, for being here, and all of my teachers. My project focused on exploring bacteriophages as alternatives to antibiotics in order to combat antibiotic resistance. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Lucero Varela, and I am currently a senior at Lakeview High School. I was a student that was lucky enough to represent the great city of Chicago, Chicago Public Schools, at the White House on Monday, March 23rd. I never thought that my science fair project, a small electrical circuit that models an artificial pancreas, would have allowed me to walk the same halls that FDR, Ronald Reagan, and John F. Kennedy did years ago. On Monday, I was lucky enough to have met President Barack Obama, many notable scientists such as Leland Melvin, Bill Nye, Megan Smith, and many others. I was also given the opportunity to have a sit-down with Vice President Joe Biden. We discussed the importance of STEM and how we can get others to engage in the field. Not only was I intrigued with meeting so many important people, but I was inspired by all the exhibitors. From the five kindergarten Brownie Scouts who made the battery-powered page turner, to the girl creating fuel—from algae. They taught me that anything’s possible. In order to succeed, we must be willing to learn. I was so grateful to have been given such a life-changing experience, but none of it would have been possible without the Office of College and Career Success, the Student Science Fair, my parents, and the Lakeview administration and staff, especially Mrs. Simon and Dr. Doshie for accompanying me on this trip. Thank you for funding and taking the time needed to make this trip possible, but most importantly, thank you all for your support throughout the way.
I would like to take a moment to applaud all of these members, especially one of the Keery Condor, Jose Manuel, who actually—I served in the science fair a couple of years ago with him, and his project, every time I asked him, it could not compare to my project. It was just—it was amazing and bizarre, and I just want to applaud them. And Ms. Patterson and Principal Perry, who were mentors when I did my project as well, and to see them continue, and I wish the best of luck to all of them, and then Jose Manuel. Thank you.
Thank you so very, very much. Mr. President, I see that we have some of our administrators here and teachers that would like to indulge for a moment and just ask if any of our administrators here—I see my principals here—if you would like to say anything, please feel free to come forward.
Good morning, President Vitale, board members, Dr. Bird Bennett. I just want to say on behalf of Lane Tech High School, thank you for supporting science fair and taking time in your schedule to have our students available here today from across the city. STEM education is extremely important to our country, but also globally. We focus on not only increasing science awareness, but those other areas of engineering, mathematics, and computer science. We also have many students that represent very different and diverse backgrounds in our science programs across the city. I think it’s something to be extremely proud of. We have JEMs programs across the city for girls in engineering, math, and science that the board has supported, and I think all of those really show how much—how well-vested the Board of Education is in science education, and I believe in that very wholeheartedly as a former science teacher. So I just want to say on behalf of our students, thank you for your support.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris.
Good morning, and I just want to thank the board and thank Jose Manuel for the work that he’s done, and he will continue to do, I’m sure. On behalf of the students of Keery High School, thank you so much for supporting science.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity, Scott Gruns from Lakeview High School, principal. I want to point out, Lucy highlighted that when she met the president, she talked a lot about her science project, but she’s not even interested in pursuing science. She’s interested in pursuing poli-sci. So it just shows the integration that science will have with STEM initiatives such as science fair across all fields and all professions, and it’s something I wanted to highlight. So congratulations again.
Mr. President, we’re incredibly proud of all of our students that we recognize and honor today. I am ashamed to say that, as you describe your projects, didn’t understand a thing. But thank you so very, very much. You are truly the future. Thank you.
Barbara, if I can add something. I attended the science fair on behalf of the board, and I certainly was inspired by all of you. It was a learning experience for me. So I really want to thank all of you, your families. I want to thank all the administrators again, and especially all the partners that make this possible, because we need additional resources to make it happen. And I always wanted to be a scientist, and you have given me hope. I thank you. I thank you.
Thanks again. Thanks for coming down, and congratulations to all of you. As Barbara said, you make our future look brighter, and we’re really pleased to have you here today. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. President, that concludes Honoring Excellence.
Let us proceed with the business portion of the meeting, and I’m going to turn it back over to you again, Barbara.
Thank you again, President Vitale and members of the Board of Education. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity to attend the launch of our new Latino and Latin American Studies curriculum at the National Museum of Mexican Art in Pilsen. The Latino curriculum is a companion piece to the African-African-American Studies curriculum we began to implement across the district last year, and I’m proud to say that these are the finest and most comprehensive study programs of their kind. The Latino and Latin American Studies curriculum is a result of an extensive collaboration with partners from Chicago’s cultural and education sectors, as well as the Latino Advisory Council that I convened last year. Like the African-American curriculum, it was modeled after the Latino and Latin American Studies program that is driven by the universal themes of culture, dignity, and identity that goes through the very heart of our collective human experience. Every child, regardless of their race, culture, or religion, benefits from learning these individual and universal lessons. Areas of study include Latino contributions to literature and the arts, ancient civilizations, family traditions in Central America, global trends of immigration and migration, and much, much more. Latinos now make up the largest percent of students’ demographics in the Chicago Public Schools, but for far too long, our ancestral story was relegated to the back pages of the history book. The rich curriculum, which will be woven into the arts, literacy, social science, mathematics, science, and other areas of study, brings the broader story of the Latino and Latin American experience to the forefront. Our students will learn from other cultures, not simply about them. I congratulate our Office of Teaching and Learning and the community partners such as Northeastern University—I’m sorry, Northeastern Illinois University’s Latino and Latin American Studies program, and the National Museum of Mexican Art, and the National Museum of Puerto Rican Arts and Culture for their work in developing this authentic new Our district is blessed with a richness of diversity. Some 130 languages are spoken by our students. More than 70,000 of our students are growing up in households where English is not the primary language. And while this curriculum is one way in which we support and promote diversity, Chicago Public Schools is also one of the early adopters of the SEAL—the state SEAL of biliteracy. The state SEAL is a statement that mastering the ability to speak, read, and write in multiple languages is not only valuable, but it is worthy of recognition. Chicago Public School students can earn the state SEAL of biliteracy on their high school transcript when they demonstrate mastery of two or more languages. This will give our students an immeasurable advantage over their peers when they’re looking for future employment opportunities and when they apply to a college or university. By embracing and implementing the SEAL of biliteracy, we are reaffirming our support of multilingualism, literacy, cultural awareness, and that these are factors that drive academic achievement. And we are also helping to fulfill our goal of creating student learning environments where diversity is not only better understood, but diversity is celebrated. In keeping with this theme, thousands of our students and their families will be participating in the City of Chicago’s 16th Annual Dia de los Niños, celebrating Young Americans Parade, in celebration in Pilsen on Saturday, April 25th. Chicago Public Schools has helped to organize and guide this celebration since its inaugural year in 1999, and it gives voice to the most important residents—I believe the most important residents of our city, and those are our children. So it is appropriate, I think, that this year’s theme is education and how access to a rich, highly qualified, highly deep, and rigorous curriculum can open a whirl of opportunities for Chicago’s next generation of children. As in the past years, this is a free event, and it will feature a parade through Pilsen and culminate in a large celebration at Harrison Park with exciting games and art and educational activities for our children. I hope that everyone takes the opportunity to attend the parade and to celebrate on April 25th in support of our children. More details can be found at—I feel like a commercial now, right—at ChicagoDiasdelosNiños.com. Last week, we released a midyear data, a midyear data highlighting our continued effort to promote positive learning environments in our schools and to adopt a more equitable approach to student discipline. I’m proud to say that these efforts, along with the revisions to our student code of conduct that the board approved last June, have resulted in a 60% reduction in out-of-school suspensions and a 38% drop in expulsions across all levels in our school during the 2014-15 school year when compared with the same time period last year. This is incredible and remarkable, and an achievement for our school district that had one of the most strict zero-tolerance student discipline policies in the country. The suspensions and expulsions reduction plan that we implemented last year aligns to pillar two of our district action plan, and that is to create a system of supports that meet the social, emotional needs of our students, and to keep our students engaged in school and focused on their education. We know one thing for sure, that when students are not in school, they miss out on the key instructional time that they need in order to be successful. And when students, particularly our most at-risk students, lose the connection to their school and to their communities, they risk dropping out of the system altogether. So by establishing a more holistic— So by establishing a more holistic approach to student misconduct and by investing in a social, emotional program that connects our children, we are addressing the root causes of poor behavior, and we promote safe and positive learning environments that we have promised and committed for our children. I would like to take the opportunity now to introduce Karen Van Osgood. She is our district's executive director for social, emotional, learning. Karen?
Thank you so much. Good morning, President Vitale, members of the board, and thank you, CEO Bird Bennett. One year ago, we presented to you the district's comprehensive suspensions and expulsions reduction plan, which includes a variety of initiatives related to policy, accountability systems, professional development, and family and community engagement. All of these were geared towards implementing a more supportive and instructive school discipline practice that also maximized student time in the classroom. All of these efforts have been moving forward since February, so we wanted to take this opportunity to update you on the tremendous gains in our discipline data that were just mentioned, as well as the supports that helped us to attain those numbers. We will also share our proposed path forward. As you may recall, the comprehensive suspensions and expulsions reduction plan consists of six work streams designed to ensure we maximize student time in the classroom. I will share progress highlights in each of the following areas. The SEC revisions that were passed in June 2014, enhancement to our accountability systems, provision of strong resources to support schools and parents in this work, the professional development to support implementing the new SEC, and changes to our expulsion process to ensure parent engagement upfront and to consider alternative intervention programs like mentoring or substance abuse treatment before recommending expulsion. Finally, engagement of citywide partners, students, and families, including our charter school partners, as part of the Chicago Collaborative for Supportive School Discipline. The 2014 Student Code of Conduct passed in June pushed Chicago Public Schools to the forefront of a national movement away from zero tolerance and towards a restorative approach to discipline. This SEC puts the teaching of social and emotional skills and behavior at the center of our educational mission, right alongside our students' academic development, knowing that these two domains cannot be separated. The current SEC provides limits to the use of out-of-school suspension based on student age and the nature of student behavior, providing more specificity in these descriptions. The policy allows principals to assess the root cause of student behavior and apply supports and interventions when appropriate rather than punishment. You will be reminded of some of the specific edits listed here. We know that one of the key levers for advancing this work is ensuring that our schools and our communities have detailed behavior data at their fingertips. We have made this data available both internally and externally. Further, we did not want to change policy without providing resources to support schools in this change. We've provided numerous resources to support implementation of the SEC, including a substantial investment in the form of 14 network SEL specialists and restorative practices coaches that are now available to over 100 schools. We have also expanded our online resources, including tools for restorative practices, videos of best practice in CPS schools, curricula to build students' knowledge of bullying, digital citizenship, and their overall SEL skills. CPS has also developed an extensive menu of professional development supports to aid schools in this work. Last summer, all schools attended a half-day session to introduce the new SEC and the guidelines for effective discipline. This school year, we have expanded our supports for 79 schools through an intensive school climate cohort, and we have trained 180 schools to implement an evidence-based SEL curriculum. We have also created trainings on skills-based in-school suspension models, expanded our behavioral health team model, and created a professional learning community for deans and disciplinarians from across the city. Finally, a district-wide campaign begun last year has engaged external stakeholders around supportive discipline practices. Partners are now invited to participate on the Mayor's Commission for a Safer Chicago as part of the Restorative School Community subgroup, which is co-shared by myself and Jadeen Chow. This group continues to meet quarterly to review data, to share feedback, and surface any concerns on implementation. We have also partnered with charter schools to review their student codes of conduct and encourage their adoption of restorative strategies, granting them access to our district alternative to expulsion, the SMART program. In partnership with MiGFA Challenge, Voice, and Emoja, CPS students will host a student discipline conference in May, and through a grant from the Annenberg Institute for School Reform, CPS is collaborating with COFI and Voice to develop parent-led peace centers in schools, parent training on restorative practices, and a scalable model for reducing suspensions and racial disproportionality throughout the district. As a result of these efforts, the data on suspensions and expulsions for this year's first semester compared to the same time period last year is quite encouraging. As Barbara mentioned, suspensions are down 61% district-wide. We have also expanded our targeted interventions to schools with high expulsion referrals and have opened our SMART program to charter schools. As a result, we now see expulsions in district-managed schools down 69%, while in charters, they are also down by 30%. While we are thrilled with the dramatic reductions in the use of exclusionary discipline that we have seen to date, we, like districts across the country, continue to struggle with racial imbalances in the application of suspensions and expulsions. We know that providing training around restorative practices and building awareness of behavior data are two of the key levers to improve these outcomes. We will continue to apply our efforts in these areas. Further, as we help teachers and school staff to analyze the root cause of student behavior, we are enhancing our training around trauma-informed practice, as well as the integration of SEL skill development with Common Core instruction. We also look forward to the two new items, one I mentioned, the student-led discipline conference, as well as highlighting best practices for SEL in our own CPS schools through a certification process that will begin this spring. Finally, I will leave you with a note from one of our CPS high school teachers who just began her work with a restorative practices coach. She wrote this note to her coach, but also to be shared with her colleagues, to share what she had experienced. She says, "I just wanted to take the time to give you some feedback from the peace circle we held on March 30. First of all, the experience was so extremely powerful. I was in awe of how the students participated and responded with so much respect and dignity. I saw firsthand how they saw me and Ms. Malone as people, not teachers or even authority figures. They were respectful to each other as well. There was so much emotion in the room by the end of the session. I have also noticed how these students have changed their behavior over the past week. One student has been asking for the circle again. I have to admit, I was skeptical about the peace circle in the beginning, which is why I wanted to try it out for myself. I strongly urge you, my colleagues, to give it a try or even attempt it with a small group in your class. I realize our students can be difficult at times, but there is hope. I believe if we put forth the effort to reach out to them, they will definitely reach back because they want to be seen, heard, and loved, and to know somebody has their back. Thank you so much for leading such a powerful session and helping me realize again why I became a teacher. Thank you for opening my eyes and allowing me to see my students. Thank you to the board for supporting this essential work."
Thank you, Karen. Excellent presentation. Fellow board members, any questions for Karen or Barbara about the initiative?
Yeah, I just had a question. Thank you. Thank you for this report. Students need to be in school instead of out of school, and I think you've shown a lot of progress. When you mentioned curriculum connected to social and emotional learning?
Yes.
Is this something that schools select, or are we guiding them in that process? Because I know that very much connected, starting in primary grades and developing up, any ideas on that?
Yes, so we have essentially an adopted model of curriculum that we support schools in. So you may have heard of the second step curriculum in elementary schools or the past curriculum, as well as advisory programs that we're working with in high schools. So we provide training and coaching around those curriculums. And then we have a list of providers that have been approved through an RFP that are SEL curricula as well that schools may select from.
So in the action plan, what are the new targets? I know you mentioned racial imbalances. So what's the new target here connected to our pillar?
I will actually be presenting that to you.
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
Karen, I just ask you, as, because I know you've looked around the country and other districts that are doing this kind of work. Is there, is there anything that's out there that you think we're not doing that we could do if we had extra resources or whatever?
That's a great question. I mean, I think we're applying our resources in the right direction. I think there's always a need for more. I think the coaching model is what we're really seeing is having a good benefit for schools, which is why we've invested more heavily in the restorative practices coaches this year. And I think, you know, continuing to expand that work will be important.
Karen, we have heard concerns before from the community about charter schools not being particularly aligned. And while I'm thrilled to see that they do have a reduction, they're still expelling students at a significant rate, you know, much, much higher than us. What's the plan to continue to work with them? Because it would strike me, looking at this data, that they're not fully aligned with where we are.
Yeah, great question. I mean, charter schools do have the autonomy to set their own student codes of conduct, but we will be meeting with them again this spring. Each charter operator sits down with members of the Innovation and Incubation Team, my team, to really say, how can we help move this in the right direction? And I think, you know, we are continuing to market and through word of mouth, get opportunities out around the alternative to expulsion program as well, so.
So I would just encourage you, they are entitled to their own code of conduct, but they also have to align with our policies. And when we speak of our policies, I can't think of one that's more important than reducing expulsions and suspensions. And so I think it's really important to remind them that part of their contracts are aligning with our policies and that it's progress, but it's progress at a pace that I think isn't where our progress is, which would indicate that they could probably be a little bit more committed to it.
Thank you.
Board members, one of the things that we do is we require the charter schools to submit their policies to us, and we review them in the law department. We encourage them to adopt our student code of conduct, but to the extent that they don't, we review them, and we've stepped up this effort to make sure that they follow, at minimum, due process procedures that we follow, that they protect the rights, particularly of students with disabilities, and that they have a fair, reasonable process. So that's an ongoing effort that we've stepped up, and we'll be stepping up even further this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Again, thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much.
Can I take a moment to make a comment? Overall, I would like to take a moment and pay tribute to the hard-working members who contribute to the 60% fewer out-of-school suspensions so far this year, along with the 69% reductions in expulsion. I can probably say that one of the huge factors that contributed to this result was the district push for restorative justice practices in school. As an honorary student and board member, and a member of the CEO's Advisory Council, it's one of the projects that I hold dearly to my heart, and I continue to work with members, CEO Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, Chief of Safety and Security, Jadeen Chow, and community members to expand restorative justice, not only in CPS, but in charter schools as well. And I will continue to do so on behalf, but I'm proud to see this result. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ada.
Today, I extend my thanks to our principals, teachers, network chiefs, and staff who helped our schools to successfully roll out the PARK assessment to tens of thousands of students this month. Despite the fact that I continue to believe that the administration of the test was not in the best interest of our children, I could not chance the potential loss of nearly $1 billion to be removed from our district's children. And hence, when we were called to do it, given the preparation that the Office of Accountability had taken with our schools, we did successfully roll out PARK this month. I should add that the teams from the Office of Accountability and IT collaborated to provide technical and logistics support to the schools in the weeks leading up to the tests. Once again, and once the tests began, they worked around the clock to quickly identify and troubleshoot any problems that arose. School staff shouldered the responsibility to coordinate student schedules and to make sure that the right tools were in place at the right time. And so I just wanted to thank everyone for the late nights, the early mornings, and to your dedication for our students. Alex Haley said once, "Find the good and praise it. Honoring excellence is our small sample of the excellent work that the vast majority of our 400,000 students are achieving every day as they work with their teachers, their administrators. And it's a way of finding our good and praising it each month." And I thank you for the opportunity. This concludes my report, President Vitale.
Thank you, Barbara. Any questions for Barbara? Seeing none, I will now turn to a couple of announcements. As usual, I will remind everybody that if you're interested in scheduling some office hours with a board member, you can call the board office at 773-553-1600. We're always pleased to offer this opportunity, and I'm pleased to tell you that people do take advantage of it. You're all welcome to do so. Madam Secretary, would you please share the details of the next board meeting?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on April 22, 2015, at the CPS Loop Office. Advanced registration will open at 8:00 a.m. on Monday, April 13, 2015, and will close on Friday, April 17, 2015, at 5:00 p.m., or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now proceed with today's public participation. We have a couple of public officials with us today, so I'm going to start with them and invite them also to bring their registered speakers with them, if they so choose, to discuss their issues. I'll start with Alderman Moreno.
So with Alderman Moreno, Mr. President, they identified two designated speakers as Speaker Number 17, Susan Nasbom, and Speaker Number 49, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, CEO, members of the board. We're here today, members of Wells Community High School. Wells Community High School is located in the West Town neighborhood, roughly, not roughly, right at Augusta and Ashland. We have, in my ward, two high schools, Roberto Clemente nearby as well. Roberto Clemente, as we all know, has an incredible legendary baseball team amongst a lot of other great things. But what is sometimes not looked at because of the greatness of Clemente is we have an excellent baseball program at Wells. And I think we have some pictures. What these students have to practice on is almost Third World. They are practicing on a concrete jungle, and that's no exaggeration. So instead of coming to CPS two years ago with our hands out and saying, "Build us a field," this community went out and raised over $1 million. I'm not exaggerating. Over $1 million to help because we know the situation that CPS is in. We get it. Unfortunately, we come here frustrated because it looks like we are going to lose that money for a variety of reasons. Private money, non-taxpayer money. We're not giving up the fight to build a world-class field at Wells. But I think it's indicative of me as the elected official in that ward to let you know what this community has done. I congratulate my colleague Alderman Smith, who is building this at Alcott School in that community. They did a great job in raising money. They raised $200,000, and that field is being built. This community, these students, and these parents went out and raised over $1 million. I'm putting $150,000 in award money, and yet we have no traction for a field that's already designed, ready to go, is going to be used by other schools, Little League, the community. This is exactly what we ask of our community in tough times.
Alderman Moreno?
But unfortunately, we stand here today not moving forward one bit. I ask you for your help. I ask you for your support in helping us move Wells High School to the field, not only that it deserves, but that it needs. I'd be more than willing to meet with any of you at any time, at the field, down here, in my office. Meet the community. We're in. We're 100% in. We just need CPS to be a little bit in, and we'll get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Good morning, President Vitale.
Please state your name.
My name, that was coming next. Okay. My name is Susan Nasbom, and I am the project coordinator of the Wells Field of Hope. I will say that I was told I'm limited to two minutes. You can't limit a teacher to two minutes, but I'm going to try my very best. Alderman Moreno said most of it, but I will tell you some of the missing facts. We found a partner, the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation. They are fabulous. They helped us raise money. We wrote grants. We've worked on this for two years. They worked with CPS. We met with CPS representatives during the two years, starting in February of 2012, I'm sorry, 2013. We had the plans. They got us a grant for a half a million dollars from Under Armour. They wanted it to coincide with their opening of their store on Michigan Avenue this month. However, at a meeting on December 15 of last year, we were told by a CPS representative with whom we had been working for two years with the Ripken Foundation and with us, that we can't use even $1 of public funding if the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation is to build this field. This is the first we heard of it. We never heard this mandate in the two years of meetings, countless meetings, at least a dozen with the Ripken Foundation, at least five or six with CPS. So we're told we can't use it. We lost the million, the half a million dollars. They're building a field in Marquette Park instead to coincide because we couldn't use our matching funds that we had been promised in order to fulfill this. Wells is a school 98% below poverty level. Wells is a school 98% below poverty level. Our kids are fabulous. We need the teams. We know that that's what keeps them, helps to keep them in school. We need this field for our students. Please help us.
Thank you, Ms. Nasbom.
Thank you, Dr. Nasbom. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and board members. My name is and I am a sophomore at Wells Community Academy High School. I come here today to talk about my school's mission, the Field of Hope. When I first heard about the Field of Hope and what our school was doing to fundraise, I was really happy and excited. I couldn't believe us, Wells High School, was going to have a field of our own. No more hard concrete, bloody knees and elbows. No more home baseball, softball, and soccer games, not at our real home. I've been to school, I've been to some schools with some beautiful fields, like Orr, North Lawndale, Marshall, Lane Tech, and many more. Now it was Wells' turn to have a beautiful field too. But when my school found out we weren't receiving a field anymore, we were so crushed, especially our student athletes. Having this field could have created a football team for our school. Having this field would have made us more than happy. Wells always gets put down for its reputation in the past. Man, do I love Wells, especially the teachers and staff. We've worked so hard to rise above the ashes Wells used to be. We deserve this field. You really do not know what having a field will do for my school and community. You really do not know what this field will mean to all of us. You really do not know how happy having this field will make all of us. Soccer is one of three sports I play at Wells. I decided to play to follow one of my role models, Cynthia Vasquez, a senior at Wells who will be playing Division II soccer at Robert Morris University next fall. Who would have ever thought a student from Wells High School would go on to be a D2 athlete? I really wanted Cynthia to see this field. I want to see this field. This is Cynthia's last year to play high school soccer. This is my last year to see someone as good as Cynthia play soccer. I could only imagine what it would have been like for her to spend her last year playing on the field that was promised to us. Wells needs this field for our students, for our athletes, for our community. Please don't shut us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alderman, let me offer that either I or one of my fellow board members will get together with you and whoever you want to have represented, along with the CPS staff, and let's see if we can have a meeting and make sure we understand all the details and see how we can try to move ahead with this if we can, okay? So I assure you that Abigail Lehrer will make sure we get a meeting set up so that we can talk this through, okay?
We appreciate that sooner than later, Mr. President.
We'll do.
I think we have one more speaker.
Thank you.
No, we don't? Only two speakers?
Only two speakers.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. President, and I hope that happens in the next week or so.
Yep. We will work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you for all coming down. Alderman O'Connor, good to see you. You're welcome to have your constituents join you.
And that speaker, Mr. President, is Speaker Number 25, Amy Dolhey.
Good morning, Mr. President, CEO Bennett, and distinguished members. I have the honor of representing the 41st Ward, which is located on Chicago's far northwest side. I come before you again today to provide testimony about the very urgent need for a new annex at Ebinger Elementary, which is very, very overcrowded. This school is the perfect embodiment of what can happen when parents, educators, students, and a supportive community can come together to accomplish big things. Ebinger is one of the schools that has shown it is capable of thinking outside the box, especially during these difficult financial times. They raise unbelievable sums of money to help pay for the basics, and they never, ever complain. They have proven time and time again that they know how to think creatively and stretch a dollar. Unfortunately, Ebinger's greatest challenge, overcrowding, is one that cannot be resolved through private fundraising efforts. The bottom line is that Ebinger is at a breaking point. Hallways are packed, classrooms are cluttered, room closets function as offices, and the existing facilities in general simply cannot safely accommodate the school's existing and ever-growing population. We are so proud of the fact that Ebinger is home to one of Chicago's newest IB programs, and I know that every parent, teacher, and student is up to the challenge. Unfortunately, given the space constraints, we fear that Ebinger will not have the necessary learning conditions to help ensure this program takes off. The people responsible for Ebinger's success are honest, decent people who care about our public school system and the communities they support. Now, as you know, I've come before this board on several occasions, hat in hand, pleading for your assistance, urging you to make the necessary investments in these overcrowded schools, schools that have proven to produce a significant return on that investment. And I come before you today again, knowing full well that we have seen that return. When a school has the space to flourish, it will do so, and it will make the city proud. Let's build on that record of progress. Let's work together to get past these last remaining hurdles. Help us address these remaining capital needs so that we can solidify Ebinger's reputation as a world-class neighborhood school.
Alderman O'Connor, please conclude.
I'll finish up.
Thank you.
Help us secure this desperately needed space. Help us achieve reasonable classroom sizes, and help us improve working conditions for educators and students. I know that my voice will not be the only one you hear today, and I know you must be selective when deciding where and when to invest these limited dollars. So I encourage you to come visit Ebinger and see all that they are accomplishing, and see how this investment will help ensure a great success story for our public school system. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to continuing this dialogue.
Right. Thank you, Alderman.
Good morning. My name is Amy Dolhey, and I'm a parent of four children at Ebinger, and I also serve as the chairperson of our LSE. We are here once again on behalf of our community requesting an addition to our building. This month, we would like to give our time to our students' voices. Georgia says, "One reason we need an addition is that our preschool was bumped out because we don't have enough classrooms. Those little people really wanted to go here, and they just had to get bumped out." Tony is worried because our younger siblings are no longer attending our school because our preschool has been lost. Hannah shared, "An annex would also help us by supplying classrooms for teachers who don't have them. I get pulled out for special reading class. We have to sit on the floor." Evan mentions, "We need an addition especially for the teachers that teach in the hall because they sometimes get disturbed because of people being loud in the hall." Jonathan brought this to our attention. According to a sign, our lunchroom was made to only fit 50 people. It would be awesome if we could get bigger rooms. In Pauline's opinion, "I don't like eating lunch at 10:30 a.m. It feels like the day just got started. It's hard for me to focus in the afternoon." Yair feels, "It is hard to learn when there are so many kids in one small room." Thomas declared, "This is important because with limited space, there comes many distractions that could affect the learning experience for many kids." Devin says, "Our classroom needs more space. We can barely walk around in our classroom. During Daily Five, our teacher has to set up Listen to Read every single day. I wish there was room for a table to leave it out." Jack exclaimed, "We're crammed in here like that commercial with the 16 oranges and no room for sugar, but with 33. And instead of oranges, we are children. We need more space for rooms. Please, Mr. President, please, Mr. Governor, please, guy who sells hot dogs, anybody. We need an addition." And lastly, Yanni says, "We need a lot of new things. We need a bigger gym. We need a new bathroom. We need a better auditorium. I think our school needs an addition. Can you please try to? Your friend, Yanni." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolhey. Is there another speaker? Is that it? Okay. Well, thank you for coming down and representing the community, Alderman. I always appreciate your being here. Some of us will get out to see your school. We are not in denial about your need. I should tell you that we've looked into this. You are very high on the list. All we need to do is come up with the money. But you're a very high priority for us because we do know the need that you need, and to the extent that we can find the money, you'll be very high on the priority list to solve it. So thanks for coming down and representing your community.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, I'm told that Vice President Sharkey is here and would like to speak. Jesse?
Thank you, CEO Bird Bennett. I'll point to members of the board. Thank you for having me. Let's talk about money. I know that this board, through its employees, has spoken in the press lately about pensions and the cost of pensions. I also know that there's been some quotes about looking at about a $1.1 billion operating shortfall next year. You know, if you do that math, even if the Supreme Court eviscerates pension clause and rules that it's not a workable clause, which is something that we would obviously object to, but even if you get that, there's still a $350 million or so operating budget, deficit. And I suspect that you know that the series of extraordinary measures, counting tricks of 14 months and 12 months, duct tape, Tim Colley's chewing gum, I mean, these sort of contraptions that hold together the budget, don't answer the basic question about what we're going to do next year. And to my way of thinking, we're looking at California-scale cuts, by which I mean furloughs, deep layoffs, increases of class size, and yet we're not talking about it. And what I suspect is that we're not talking about it until the day after the election, and then we're going to hear more about it. And so I want to ask, I want to raise the question of money, frankly, and I'd like to hear some of the detailed thinking about that. Pensions, cutting our pensions, in addition to being the wrong thing to do, isn't going to solve the problem. And just last thought is you will hear the teachers' union talk publicly in the upcoming days about some of our demands. For example, we've demanded a $15-an-hour minimum wage for the people who both work in the board and who contract with the board through their employees. And you'd be right in saying these things cost more money, but this has to do with our basic belief that we're not going to solve this problem with cuts. Those cuts would be shocking and, I think, politically unacceptable. So I want to raise that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick response test. We're not in denial. We, in fact, I think we do talk about it, maybe ad nauseam to some people, but it is real, and we need to take, pull every lever we can in order to solve the problem. As you all know, our ability to raise taxes is limited. We've done it every year to the extent that we can. It requires cooperation from Springfield for us to do more. You know, Springfield is Springfield, and it's not like we're not down there trying to advocate for more funding for education, because we are. So we recognize it, and at least I think we're doing everything that's within our power to be responsible.
We have some ideas about revenue in Springfield, and we'll be happy to go with you to Springfield to advocate for some of that, beyond a casino. I mean, I don't think taxing people who have a gambling issue is necessarily the best for our young people, but we have some ideas. We'd be happy to work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we continue with public participation, Mr. President, I'd like to address the audience. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with the board office staff member, Eric, and he's to your left. You will be lined up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience. I would also like to note that there is a timer on the top of the podium for the speakers to see. When there are 30 seconds remaining, the color will turn yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up and allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near as the railing as possible, this will allow for people to pass through the area safely. Thank you. So, Mr. President, I'll proceed with the speakers list, and our first speaker then will be Speaker Number One, please, Tiffany Tylora, followed by Speaker Number Two, Janice Holmes, and then Speaker Number Six, Samantha Creitney, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Education, and my name is Tiffany Taylor. My name is Tiffany Taylor. I am a proud parent of two children, attending Lewis School of Excellence. My second-grade son is on the honor roll and also won the Citizenship Award for First and Second Grade. I also have a son in preschool, and my youngest daughter will be registered for preschool at Lewis, April 17. I have been at Lewis for three years now. I was at the school right before the turnaround. I am happy about all the changes to my school. I am really happy with all the staff. I was really able to connect with each and everyone at the school. I don't feel like my children are just another number or just another paycheck. Lewis School teachers go above and beyond for my children. I like the new structure. The school feels safer. I like that the parents just can't walk into school and go to classrooms with no purpose. I volunteer in the school five days a week, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:20 or later if needed, and also help in the office whenever they need me. I volunteer in the school because when I was a child, I never had the attention that I needed. Someone to give me, or someone to give me that extra push. I always said when I was a kid, I was going to be, when I have kids, I was going to be involved. I don't do it just for my children, but those who don't have, for those who don't have anyone. I also sit on the PAC. As the vice chairperson, I attend LAC meetings and BAC meetings monthly. I volunteer whenever and whenever I need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Work.
Our next speaker, please, Janice Holmes.
Good afternoon or morning. Yes, my name is Janice Holmes, and I'm a...
Ms. Holmes, could you speak into the mic for a second?
Oh, yes. I'm a community activist for Lewis, and I'm also the community advocate. I work well with the community. I've been in Lewis since, been in the community for 19 years. My job is, I wear many hats. If the school needs somebody to, everything but a teacher, because I'm not going to the classroom, I don't have those credentials. But if a child needs a hug, I'm there. I work closely with my alderman, and I work closely with ASUL. And in that case, ASUL is helping me to educate my parents so they can better educate their children. And my thing is that a man is a terrible thing to waste. We come in strength and numbers, but I'm one person, and I roar when I come. And I would like for, my alderman is trying to help me to get a patrolman or either somebody because we have an excellent preschool morning and afternoon for the children. But due to the fact we're by a park, I'm right across the street from the Farley Park, we need either a policeman or a safety patrol. We have parent safety patrol, and we're trying to do the best we can with that, but I'm asking the board if they could see how, because the alderman is trying to get me, is trying to help us to get that, either a policeman or to better help, because we don't qualify for safe patches, but the community and myself, I'm out there every day, because I'm going to holler at you and your kids if you're crossing the street the wrong way. But again, I want to thank you for listening to me. And again, and ASUL is excellent, and I am a lion, and hear me roar, and you have a nice day.
Thank you very much.
My name is Samantha Creitney, and I have a child, which is also an AUSL school. I'm here to talk about the great things that we're doing at Howe. Working with the PAC and LSE, we have been working on a safety patrol. So right now, currently, we're working with our alderman, and she is helping us out getting the vests and also the horses to maintain that, to maintain that, as well as the, working with the police commander in our community. One of the goals with the LSE and the PAC is to really increase the parent participation and getting the parents to come to the school. So right now, we're highlighting our family movie night, and also, AUSL is helping us with a family portrait night, to really get the parents to come to the school, engage them, and talk to them, because we're finding that sometimes they just come up to the school and pick up the children. So if we create a family event to get them to come, then we can talk to them personally, one-on-one, to have them come to the school. Also, next year, we're really trying to increase the volunteering at the school with the parents. Even with recess monitoring, we know that that takes sometimes the support staff away from the school. So if we can get parents to come in for an hour to help with the school, that would be grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creitney. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Ms. Creitney. Our next speaker, Mr. President, then, will be Speaker Number Three, Linda Watson, followed by the speakers from Dura Elementary, Speaker Number 22, Julie Rodriguez, and then we'll have the group from Oglesby, Speaker Number Five, Nakia Terry. And I had asked for that earlier, for designated speakers, Mr. President, for Oglesby, but they were not in the audience, so hopefully they'll be able to identify that when they come to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Linda Watson. Good morning, Board. It is a pleasure for me to talk to you today as a proud parent and a PAC chairman of Herschel School of Excellence and AUSL Network School. As a parent, I want to point out all of the great things that are happening at Herschel. Being an, I'm sorry, being an AUSL school, we have a full-day pre-K and a functioning child-parent center. child-parent center that allows parents to get involved, others to be free to work regular hours, and to really be a team in educating our children. Working with Mrs. Lolita McCoy Brown as our parent resource teacher, she has empowered us as parents to hold several workshops, including fitness programs, and to be active in fighting for issues we believe in. We also have a turnaround arts program that has brought famous artists into our work, into, to work with our children and to give them access to different types of learning. I truly appreciate my school and the staff that keeps, and the staff that keeps it moving in the right direction. AUSL has done phenomenal things and given us resources and a culture that involves us as parents. We are, we are proud of Herschel. We are an active parent advisory committee. We can appreciate our principal, Mrs. Davis, and we thank you for allowing the platform, this platform, to speak about the great things that are, that are happening at Herschel School of Excellence. And I would like to personally thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Julie Rodriguez, and I'm a parent of Door School. On behalf of the entire, entire John C. Door School community, we thank you for listening and beginning the partnership to address our neighborhood's concern with the severe overcrowding crisis we are currently facing. We have stayed positive and optimistic throughout, optimistic throughout this whole process. At this point, with the end of the 2014-15 school year fast approaching, it is vital that we receive knowledge of a strategic plan to ensure our cultural and academic sustainability as well as community stability. We need to know that the space and funding is being established to address this crisis. We must begin planning. It is time to take action and guarantee that the Door School community has the highest quality opportunities and our expectations of greatness will be met. Greatness needs more space. Our students, administration, staff, and community need peace of mind in order to re-energize plan and prepare for the 2015-16 school year. Our hope is that they do not spend the summer guessing.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Our next speaker, please.
Ms. Rodriguez, you know we're working with the alderman and trying to come up with a plan down there, so, you know, we're, we're trying to address the issue as best we know how, right now.
Okay, yeah, and we're aware of that, and we, we appreciate all the efforts that have been made, but at this point, we really would like to start seeing an established plan or something documented that we can see what's gonna happen next year.
Okay, we'll keep working at it and try to get that for you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, then, is Speaker number five, please, Nikia Terry.
Hello, my name is Pedro Morales, and I ha, I am a proud charter school parent. He's in second grade. I chose this school for my son because I know that teachers do their best they can to make sure the students learn. Since my son started to come to Prairie School, he has kept his grades high, improves outside the school all knowledge he's gained from school. Teachers make sure the students learn. Teachers do not come only to get paid. They do more than they should to make sure the students get what they need and more. My son is overachieving. He loves to learn. I choose that my son stays here in Prairie Charter School. I am involved too in educating, empowering, and increasing parental involvement of CIS Prairie families. CICS is a family, and we treat it as such. They say you can choose your family, but in this case, I did. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Morales.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Bassett. I'm a proud charter school parent of three boys in grades four, third, and kindergarten at CICS Prairie. When it was time for my oldest Andrew to attend school, I enrolled him in the district-run school in my neighborhood. The main reason I left this school was because Andrew was not being challenged, which led to what the teacher described as behavior issues. He was, in fact, bored. I heard about the rigorous, rigorous curriculum at CICS Prairie and was instantly intrigued. After visiting, the advanced curriculum and teachers' true concern for their students was clearly evident. I enrolled my children immediately. Andrew entered Prairie in the bottom of his class, and within two months had made it to the top. This was due to the dedication of his teachers and their diligence of getting him to where he needed to be. They will not let a child fail. The staff dedication at Prairie is in no comparison to any other school around. With limited options in my neighborhood for schools...
Ms. Bassett, can you please conclude?
I am happy that I have the freedom to choose CICS Prairie as my home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bassett.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Lori Fink, followed by Speaker number ten, Damita Kohn, and then followed by the designated speakers for the Fight for Fifteen Group, which is Speaker number thirteen, Douglas Hunter, and Speaker thirty-seven, please, Sonia Akuna.
Good morning. My name's Lori Fink, and I'm the English Language Teacher, Bilingual Program Advisor and Advocacy Representative at CICS Prairie, a public charter school on 115th Street in the Roseland Community on Chicago South Side. First, I'd like to thank you, the Board, for authorizing CICS to work within the Chicago Public Schools. Educating young minds is a privilege, and the autonomy of charters affords me unique opportunities to cultivate my passions and grow as a professional. I'm excited to speak to you today regarding a few of our initiatives. After a student told me she was going to be a cashier because she was good at math, civic core competence was born. We realized the need to expose students to more ways they can use their talents in future careers. Kids who had never heard of architecture and engineering visited Millennium Park, collected data applying common core math standards, and in partnership with Canon Design, put their observations to work and built in addition to the park, just as real architects, engineers, and designers might do. Further efforts to enrich the lives of our school community are evidence through our parental engagement work. As the bilingual program coordinator, and in partnership with CPS's Office of Language and Culture, this year we began a bilingual advisory committee to empower, inform, and involve our Latino families. We created a relationship with city colleges and now offer free English classes to the community. After completion, parents will complete a GED ESL program, and upon completion enroll in coursework to earn an associate degree. We look forward to continuing relationships like these to support our community needs. As the advocacy representative, we began building relationships with our state senator, state rep, and alderman. They've all visited Prairie this year and expressed support for working together to meet the needs of the school, community, and students. Currently, Alderman Beal is helping research vacant lot spaces to convert to a safe green space for the community. CICS Prairie is an incredibly special place for kids and their families. Kids need a complete supportive community to reach their true potential. Prairie's facilitation of connections between school, home, and community strive to do this, that.
Thank you.
We work together as one school family to meet the needs of all stakeholders.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Our next speaker, please, Speaker number ten, Damita Kohn.
Hello, everyone, and good morning. It's just a brief statement.
Okay, good morning, Ms. Kohn.
Good morning. My name is Damita Kohn, a proud and active parent of STAG School of Excellence, an AUSL Network School. I am here not only to talk about my school, but to thank the Board for being active in supporting our school. Now, at the last meeting, our PAC chair came and spoke about the need for speed bumps and added safe passage help. The Board responded immediately that day, and a representative from Safety and Security visited us several times. Okay, this lets me know that our voice is being heard. This is the same feeling I get within the school itself, okay? This makes me feel like everyone is working together to make things better for our children and community. On a personal note, okay, at one point, I had an issue with bullying that affected my son, and once I shared the information, okay, and immediate response was taken, and things are getting better. Also, with tutoring issues for my son, okay, and I want to thank you guys for that. Sorry. I look forward for the continuous improvements of STAG and working with AUSL to make sure my child and all students are safe, educated, and heard. I'm glad that if there are any concerns, that I have people to turn to, and I just want to say thank you with all sincerity, with all sincerity. And feel free to come visit STAG School of Excellence, Seventy-fourth and Morgan, South Side, Chicago.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Kohn.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And Jaden, thank you for being responsive.
Thank you. As our next speaker approaches, Mr. Douglas Hunter, we are going to have Nancy Salgado speak instead of Sonia Akuna for this group as well.
Good morning, Board, and thank you for having me here today, having us here today. I came here today to speak briefly about low wages and how they affect our young people's academic progress. These low wages that are all over our community is bringing a lot of violence in our communities. And in order to, to, to better our communities, we must do something better with the education so there's not so many drugs and violence along the way.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us here. I'm Nancy Salgado. I am thrilled to know that the CTU has joined the Fight for Fifteen for CPS student, for CPS workers. I have my daughter, a nine-year-old, which is at Brentano School now, academics on math and science. She was previously at, at another school by my neighborhood, and she's, she was being bullied. When I transferred her to Brentano, she has increased her mathematics into a B, which I am very proud. I am proud to know that the CPS deserves a living wage, just as single parent as I am. They need to be able to support their families as well. I am, I am concerned when I'm at work to know how I'm gonna pay my next, next bill. I'm pretty sure that the teachers are as well. So I think if our, our teachers get paid well as, as well, we can increase our education. I'm also affected by the cuts of the childcare. I have a four-year-old that's actually going to childcare, and I'm getting affected by Monday. We had a meeting where they're cutting our childcare, and we have to pay, now it's fifty dollars a week when I was just paying forty dollars a month. But, you know, bettering our education, it's, it's truly me. My daughter needs the support. You know, I try to be there as much as I can, you know, not worrying about anything else but being there and support her and make sure she brings her grades up. But I have to work in order to meet and needs, and it's hard, and our teachers deserve a living wage as well, so they don't have to worry about what they have to do as well and teach their, our kids well. So I'm happy to be here. I appreciate all, all the, all the time you're giving us, and I think that we, it's time for a change, and it's time for us to make this movement happen, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, Ms. Salgado.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, then, our next speaker will be Speaker number nineteen, please, Robert Lamont, followed, followed by the speakers from Lincoln Elementary School, Speaker twenty-one, Kim Morrow, and Speaker fifty, Veronica Norber, and then we will have Speaker twenty-six, Kim Davis Ambrose, and Speaker thirty-two, Bimani Obdali, please.
Good morning. My name is Robert Lamont. I'm a member of Veterans for Peace, graduate of the Chicago Public Schools, and I taught at Westinghouse History. I was in the infantry for three years. We're asking you to demilitarize the Chicago Public Schools, because the military teaches violence to solve problems. We saw that when the two basketball teams fought in one of the, in, in the schools, and one of the members of the team said, "I had to hit the other guy. He was coming after me." He needed conflict resolution. Stevie Wonder has a song. It's called "Heaven Help Us All." There are two lines in there that I would, I would highlight for you. Heaven help the boy who won't reach twenty-one. Heaven help the man that gives that boy a gun. Don't be that man. ROTC is, accordingly to the documents that they publish, for recruiting instructors, not a recruitment program for the military. In fact, what it says on page two of this document, instructors may not apply any pressure toward military service. However, Mr. Todd Connor of the CPS, in a letter to Jan Schakowsky in June of 2012, said, "It is my distinct honor to offer my strongest recommendation to the graduates of the Chicago Public Schools presented in this book for entrance into military service." Eight kids were listed here in their uniforms. The government document says, "Not a recruitment program." CPS Executive Director says, "It's recommended for the military." Big contradiction, perhaps even a contractual violation, I don't know yet. Please demilitarize the Chicago Public Schools. Give kids another option. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont. Our next speaker, please.
I came to speak on behalf of my daughter and...
Please state your name.
It's Kim Morrow, regarding a glitch in the testing system for regional gifted programs. Would you allow her to read her note cards? It's under two minutes.
She's not a registered speaker?
No, I think you should speak for her, please.
She can speak for herself?
No. You, you registered, you should speak for her.
Okay, these are her note cards. Hi, my name is... When I went to take the IG test, everything was great until I found out application was submitted wrong. This seems strange, but as I continued, my family and I found more and more families were dealing with this issue, including some of my friends. Now, what I think is strange is that no one told me my test scores wouldn't be considered, so I just sat and did the rest for no reason. And now my mom and other parents are going to the ends of the world because of the system's mistake, and none of us are asking for a spot but a chance. And yes, CPS is not perfect, it has flaws, but if you can submit my scores, everyone's scores, and give us a chance, that is all we are asking. We're asking to learn. We want to learn, explore, we want to be inside, not on cell phones or computers. We want to discover the world and create. We want to build and be proud of everything we've accomplished. And if you can send our score to us, then can't you give us a chance? A chance to be considered to learn on a higher level. We want to be taught and have to think with our heads, and this is why we want to be an IG. This is why we all learn for the world, and this is why we are asking for a chance, just a chance to be taught. Thank you for listening to me, and we hope you reconsider. And that was strictly written by her, so I'm sorry that she didn't get to advocate for herself today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Sarah Haynes from the Chicago Teachers' Union. I'm really concerned about the increasing in outsourcing that is happening with our staff and our services and our management of our departments. There's two RFPs out right now for clinicians. One is for the nurses, and the other is for the, all the therapists that serve our kids. And not only is this an increase in the contracts that currently exist, it's also a call for management to be outsourced, and we know from what happened with Aramark, this is gonna be disastrous. The nursing contract actually calls for a call center. I'm hearing from nurses across the district that the agency nurses, when they don't show up to work, it's absolute chaos. These kids, you know, that are getting served have diabetes, they have asthma, they have major allergies, and there have been some really, really scary things. Principals are running around like maniacs, trying to find Benadryl. One agency staff person told a mom last week that her daughter should stay home for the rest of the week because the nurse was, they couldn't staff a nurse at her school to give her the insulin. Another agency was, the nurse didn't show up and the kid couldn't get on the bus at all to come to school. And then the principals are trying to call the union nurses from other schools to bring them in to fill these shortages. So this is not working, and it should not be expanded. It's only gonna create more chaos. So we not only have absolutely filthy schools, which we know is true because of Aramark and Sodexo, the lives are, it is too serious with the lives that are at stake with our children and, and all of the issues that they have.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Our next speaker, please, Ida Hudson, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, please, Roy Baldwin, last call. We then have Speaker number thirty-one, please, Yolanda Armstead, followed by Speaker thirty-three, Tanika Sellers, Speaker thirty-four, Deandie Brown Whitfield, Speaker thirty-five, Vernell Brown. Last call for Yolanda Armstead. Last call for Tanika Sellers. Moving on to Speaker thirty-four, last call, Deandie Brown Whitfield. We then have Speaker thirty-five, please, Vernell Brown.
Good morning. My name is Vernell Brown, to the President and all the members. I'm here on behalf of Catalyst Circle Rock, and I want to thank you guys for investing in the school. in the school. I have three kids that go there, and we transferred from another district into that district. And my kids' scores have went from Cs and Ds to As and Bs. So I came down as a concerned parent to personally thank you guys for investing in the kids in our charter school. We have other things that they've added that most schools don't have, tumbling, Ravinia, you know, things like that. But you guys have really stepped up and helped us, and we want to say thank you, and that's all I'm going to say real quick.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you. Our next speaker, then, Mr. President, will be Speaker number forty-two, please, George Schmidt, followed by Speaker forty-three, Joy Clendenning, and then Speaker forty-four, Elizabeth Pansack.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name, George.
My name is George Schmidt. I'm a parent and other things, including, the reporter has covered, the Chicago Board of Education for more than any other person in the press section. Since this is test season, and it's a tsunami of testing, actually, I'm going to ask a few questions. That's my actual topic. Question number one, has the Board of Education applied for arbitration or any other legal action to escape from the penalties associated with the variable rate bonds otherwise called toxic swaps? I take that as a no answer. Question number two, we got to go from heavy to light. Where did the great seal of the Board of Ed go when you moved? I'm serious about this. The Board always was
George, it will reappear.
It will reappear?
It will, yes.
Thank you. Question number three, how many schools opted students out of the park? Question number four, how many children opted themselves out of the park? Question number five, why are you making high school students do the pretend E-Pass sequence, that's Explore Plan and ACT, when you know there's no validity to that sequencing? It has nothing to do with any sequence towards college or career. And I think you've already read the research on that, at least one of you has. Last but not least, are you going to try to stop the Third World conditions of our baseball fields on which one of my sons played in high school before he graduated, and others are being forced to play, as Alderman Moreno said?
Thank you, George. Our next speaker, please, is Speaker number forty-three, Joy Clendenning.
Joy Clendenning, CPS parent, raise your hand. Raise your hand is in Springfield today with parents from across the state who have serious concerns about the Park Test and about the overuse and misuse of standardized testing. One threat from the state was that the Department of Education would cut a billion dollars in funding. Interestingly, when Secretary of Education Duncan was asked about this, he denied it. We all deserve to know the facts behind these threats and intimidation tactics. Given this situation, we need clear and consistent policy on opting out. We appreciate your effort in an email to principals to clarify a confusing situation. Unfortunately, we've heard accounts of students and families threatened, intimidated, and lied to by CPS employees who spread misinformation and used intimidation tactics to get students to take the Park. For example, students will be fined, students will be suspended or expelled, students will be unable to graduate eighth grade or high school, teachers will be laid off, funds will be cut, students and parents are breaking the law if a student refuses. Some students have been made to verbally refuse to a network chief, and some students, including special education and young third-grade students, were given the test despite the school knowing the parent's intention to have the child refuse. In addition to this completely unacceptable behavior of adults in our schools, the Park continues to disrupt the education of our children. High schools with completely reworked schedules, AP classes told they will have to prepare more on their own because due to the Park schedule, they will not get through all the material they usually cover. Elementary schools with specials canceled for all students because teachers are proctoring Park. Children missing hours of IEP-required special education minutes. Middle schools missing three days of instruction in order to accommodate Park scheduling. Computer labs not available for regular instruction because of days of Park testing, and the list goes on. In addition to this report right now about the first round of Park testing, and we know there'll be another round, April and May, we are asking you and telling you the Park should never be used as a high-stakes test. It's absolutely vital moving forward that you do not attach any high stakes to the Park Test. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clendenning. Our next speaker, please, Elizabeth Pansack, last call. Moving on to the next speakers, please, Speaker forty-five, Martin Ritter, followed by Speaker forty-six, Carrie Sloan, and then we have Speaker fifty-five, Melvin McGru.
Good morning, Board members. My name is Martin Ritter. I'm an employee of the Chicago Teachers Union, and for eight years, I was a Chicago public school teacher. Between that time, I also worked at the Board of Education in what was then called the Office of New Schools, which I believe is now called Office of Innovation and Incubation. At that point, I was a school support coordinator, and my job was to investigate whether charter schools followed the necessary district mandates. And Board Member Zop, earlier, I was very pleased to hear you say that you were encouraging charter schools to follow all CPS policies and guidelines. But recent reports in Catalyst and WBEZ and others have shown that charter schools are not reporting the statistics of suspensions and expulsions. This is very concerning considering that restorative justice, a policy that encourages counseling and mediation as an alternative to kicking misbehaving kids out of school, say the lack of data raises questions about an otherwise positive trend. And based on expulsion numbers, the only data which is available for charters, the downward trend might be a wash, quote-unquote, reversing a decline since 2011, which was the last year charter school expulsion rates were reported. Now, if you have the ability to enforce the policies that require them to provide you financial numbers, other teacher certification numbers, why don't you ask them for their most up-to-date statistics on charter school discipline, expulsion, et cetera? This is transparent, this is, you are the Board of Education that gives them the charter. You should be able to say, "We want these numbers." You have a department upstairs that has numerous employees that are supposed to look at those statistics. I hope that they start doing their jobs. We want fair discipline policies across all schools, whether public, traditional, contract or charter, and hopefully we can get that before maybe the next board meeting. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Sloan, and I'm the Senior Research Analyst at the Refund America Project of the Roosevelt Institute, which is an economic policy think tank. And I'm here to talk about the findings of a report that we just released called "Our Kind of Town: A Financial Plan That Put Chicago Communities First." This report examines the motivation behind the recent CPS and City of Chicago credit rating downgrades and offers real revenue solutions for Chicago and CPS's budget problems. I encourage you to read the report, but the short story is this: The credit rating downgrades are politically motivated, and they serve Wall Street's amoral and relentless pursuit of profit. The rating agencies are pushing an austerity agenda. They want to try to force you to gut pensions by threatening further downgrades. And if you do so without considering other ways to address budget problems, you're playing right into their hands, serving Wall Street interests at the expense of Chicago public school teachers, students, and their families. Instead, we encourage you to negotiate with your union counterparts for a just solution to the pension liability created by decades of pension holidays and the removal of a dedicated pension property tax levy. Members of the community have repeatedly pointed out that you have several options for pursuing getting the money back from bad deals like auction-rate securities and interest-rate swaps. Now, as a result of latest credit rating downgrade, banks could come to collect more than $200 million in termination fees on bad swap deals. Slashing pensions is against the law. Instead of trying to break the law, CPS and the city should enforce the law by suing the banks. Pull every lever you can. In addition to getting money back on bad deals, our report details multiple other revenue options that don't require more pain and sacrifice from poor, middle-class people. I submitted copies of the report, and you'll see we detailed seven ways to fairly and ethically fix Chicago's budget. Austerity measures are political choices, not financial necessities. Your choice is allow banks to blatantly break the rules regarding fair dealing, or you can change course and deal fairly and deliberately with your employers, employees at the bargaining table.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning, Board of Education. My name is Melvin McGru, and I'm the proud parent Located in Roslyn. When he was about to graduate from eighth grade, my wife and I were concerned about what high school he would be attending. We wanted to make sure that the school we chose would challenge him academically as well as keep him in a safe learning environment. We wanted a school with a culture that would encourage him to strive beyond where he and we thought he could go. My wife heard about the Noble Network, so she made an appointment to visit the school. We got much more than we were expecting from the session. I was very impressed with what I heard from the principal and former students. I could imagine how productive and strong a man he would become just by thriving in this environment. Once he began school at Butler, and I must admit, we were all overwhelmed in the first quarter of his freshman year. Once he struggled with discipline, and we started to wonder if we had picked the wrong school. The second quarter, he joined the basketball team. His grades began to climb, and he overcame his struggles with discipline. I no longer see this as discipline, but a culture of difference-makers. With high expectations and love, he developed a strong relationship with the teachers and staff. He made the high honor roll and never looked back. He loves all things Noble. I couldn't be prouder. Butler shares a building with Corliss High School. He has opportunities to play basketball with the boys from Corliss, and they sharpen each other's skills. They enjoy this because both teams think they are better in sports, so it's always fun to watch. I know that we could not have made a better choice for our child's education. Noble offers us opportunities to engage in the education of our child. I currently serve as president of the Parent Advisory Council, which allows me to work as a liaison between faculty, parents, and the community. I am grateful for the education my son is receiving. Thank you for ensuring that my child has quality options.
Thank you, Mr. McGru. Our next speaker, then, will be Speaker number fifty-six, please, Roberto Arista, followed by Speaker fifty-seven, Anthony Marshall, followed by Speaker fifty-eight, Maria Narvillas, Speaker fifty-nine, Kimberly Torres, and the last speaker, Sandra Chavez.
Good morning, Board members. My name is Roberto Arista, a proud Foreman High School graduate and a proud charter school father. As a parent, you want better opportunities for your children. As a parent, you should have the ability to choose what school your child attends. Growing up, I didn't have that choice. If you weren't part of the MACNIC program, you went to your neighborhood high school. I went to my neighborhood high school. It wasn't for this reason. It's for this reason that I value the choice so much. My child and every child in Chicago deserves access to a high-quality education. Thank you for your support in Noble, that opened in 1999, just one year after I graduated from high school. My son's current school opened. I've seen the changes and impact Noble's having in my child's life. I'm happy with the results, support and education my son is receiving from Noble. Please continue to support to our schools and allow them to continue. Positive impact that I'm making in my life, in the life of my son and all the 10,000 students that Noble serves. As a parent, I think we have the right, the choice to decide what school we want to send to our kids. I decided to send my son to Noble. I've seen great results. I'm happy for the education he's receiving. He's in the high honor roll, and I think that every kid deserves a better education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arista.
Thank you, Mr. Arista. Our next speaker, please, Anthony Marshall.
Hi, good morning. This is Maria Narvillas. Good morning, everyone, members of the Board. This is Maria Narvillas. I have been cleaning CPS's school for nine years, and mother, and the sixth, and grandmother of the sixth.
Ma'am, could I ask you to speak into the microphone a little bit more?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I am here to tell you about my job. I have a split to my job in two schools. I work in Shubert School for four hours, and I have to clean it up, three hallways and twelve wet bedrooms in four hours. I travel to Nixon's school. Nobody pays for that. And Nixon's school, I have a seventeen classroom. I have two hallways. I have three washrooms. I have a balcony and gym and two custodian closets, I'm sorry. That's all I have to do in four hours. I can, to me, it's impossible, but I try my best. I work very hard. I don't take no lunch. I work hard to do that. This story is all my coworkers' story, and not only my story. We try to do the best, we here, with my coworkers, to ask to Ms. Barbara, make this favor to us because everybody wanted the same thing, clean school. Kids can learn better. So you can help us to call custodian, as in layoff, please, for help us keeping the school clean, more clean today. I have it right now. Sorry, right now it's very dirty. That's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Narvillas. Our next speaker, then, is Anthony Marshall.
Afternoon, Board members. My name is Anthony Marshall, Jr., and I have been cleaning Chicago Public Schools for coming up on 20 years. In the last three years, I've been cleaning at Kosmizki Community Academy. And at one time, we had five janitors, and now we have three. And we push ourselves to the max every day to keep the school as clean as we can. And I don't mind going above and beyond the call of duty, but it's just too hard to do that day in and day out. And as Maria was saying, we all want the same thing, clean schools so the kids can learn. And, sorry about that, and Clean schools so the kids can learn, and we will also want the laid-off janitors back. But in the meantime, a good step, a first good step would be to bring back the, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Marshall. Take your time. It's okay.
Yeah. Besides bringing the laid-off janitors, a first good step would be the 200-plus janitors that are part-time to make them full-time. And that would help us get closer to our goal of having clean and sanitary schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Our next speaker, please, Kimberly Torres.
My name is Kimberly Torres, and I am a parent representative from George Washington High School Local School Council. Our school is in need of a new roof, remodeling, and deep cleaning. It has been neglected far too long. In 2009, we were promised a new roof, and the Board broke that promise only to patch it once again last week. And I just want to make a note that the patching didn't work because we have puddles again today from the rain last night. It has been leaking for years. Buckets of standing water are in the hall since this past fall. The building is disgustingly dirty, infested with mice, and our pool has not been operational for almost two years. Thrown into the stagnant water are weights and gym equipment that were donated by our Alumni Association. This was done by students who have had access to this area without any adult supervision because the area is not being locked. These conditions are a health risk and a tragedy waiting to happen. Also, just recently, we were made aware that our principal has violated our student right to an education by punishing students who are tardy to first period by keeping them in the lunchroom during that period, embarking them for a school function, denying them hundreds of thousands of minutes of instructional time. I and many others received letters explaining this violation in detail. This letter was sent twice. The first one was suppressed by administration, as we have been informed. The letter is an excerpt of 2014 OIG report explaining how the administration violated CPS policy. This practice makes me wonder about compensatory minutes, which are mandated by federal law to diverse learners, and how they will be recovered for these students. Considering these issues, would you accept this for your children? We will not. Our school is thriving academically. Our teachers have gone above and beyond, and our students have achieved year after year for the last seven years. We will not be overlooked anymore. We will not have our male suppressed, and we will not get ignored, we will not have our conditions ignored and our school neglected. We pay taxes, and we expect remedy to this situation.
Thank you, Ms. Torres.
Thank you, Ms. Torres.
Our next speaker, please, Sandra Chavez, last call. Mr. President, that concludes public participation.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I'd ask my fellow Board members if they have any reaction to what they've heard today or any questions regarding the or any questions regarding the issues on our agenda for vote today, our public agenda. Charles?
Yes.
Or Rebecca.
I just wanted an update on the school cleaning because I've seen two contradictory surveys in terms of the information, and I wanted to see, you know, the accuracy of each one in terms of the improvements that we should be making. That's my first question.
Barbara, Tim?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the accuracy of the surveys. Tim, do you want to...
There are two surveys that I've read that have come out in terms of surveys for schools, and I wanted to... And there is some contradiction in terms of the current state of affairs.
Second.
I just needed some clarification.
[inaudible].
Turn it in.
The two surveys that you're referring to, the CPAA apparently did a survey of principals, which we have now received. Thank you. Which we've now...
It's on.
It's on.
Which we've now received, and we're looking at that. We don't know exactly how it was conducted. It was submitted to us by the CPAA. The other one that we think has an awful lot of merit is the independent audit that is being conducted per the contract. We have an independent auditor who...
Audited all of our schools back in the spring to determine how many of them were APA Level Two. You've heard that expression from us before. It's an industry standard for cleanliness. And we found then that only 18% of our schools were APA Level Two. We've now completed 365 of the audits, the post-audits, that we are doing to hold Airmark accountable, and we're finding that 92% of our schools are now APA Level Two. So a very significant improvement in actual cleanliness at the schools. I will say that we agree with the speakers. There's nothing more important than having clean schools for our students, and every time we hear of even a daily lapse, we are on it immediately. But as you look at, if you look at the whole district, you have to look at the independent audit and the results from that to feel encouraged by the fact that we've actually made great progress here. We're not at perfection yet, but we're working our way toward that.
Tim, the speakers raised an additional issue that we haven't actually talked about, and that's staffing, you know, what we're actually asking individual people to do. And I know that we can't look at that at a granular level. That's an Airmark issue. But I do think, at least as it was described today, there might be some concern around some of that, and I just would ask that somebody pay a little, just pay some, ask what we can ask around the staffing, because getting the school cleans is great, but pushing our employees beyond reasonable expectations to get that done doesn't seem appropriate. And I'm not necessarily saying it's one way or the other, but I thought the issue raised was appropriate, and we should at least provide some oversight to that.
I agree with you completely, and we'll follow up with both of these individuals and the schools that they are currently working at to try and understand current staffing levels and if they're reasonable or unreasonable. We do have custodial managers that manage a portfolio of 15 to 20 schools each, and it's their job to make sure that the workload is balanced and reasonable for each one. And that, there are constant shifts in that as we learn more. Just certain activities at schools make it more demanding, more after-school activities, more special education clusters, and we increase the staffing there. And as we get more familiarity and training with the equipment that's been provided, we also have more efficiencies at some schools. So Airmark is constantly adjusting that, and we're on top of them very closely on that. But we'll follow up on these two specifically.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Any other?
I just wanted to say that I did, excuse me, I just wanted to say that during office hours, I did meet with Sarah, the young lady who was addressing the nursing concern, and we did discuss some of the options that might take place. So as a board member, we are aware of it.
Okay. Thank you. And Joy, I would just tell you regarding communications between ourselves and the State Board of Education and the federal government, we... I'll remind everybody, we sent a letter to the federal government last November. I think, I'm pretty sure we made that letter public. We did not receive a response. We've communicated with the State Board of Education. I believe we have made all of those communications public, and their responses to us public. So I would suggest that if there's an issue about what's accurate between the state and the federal government, you need to ask the state, because we don't, we have not had, we're not, we don't, we've not had communication with the federal government, other than the letter that we sent to them. Okay. Dr. Hines.
Okay. I move for the passage of motion number fifteen dash zero three two five dash MO1 and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subject specified in the motion.
May I have a second?
Second. Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Board Member Zap?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Board Member Quazo? President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
Thank you. We'll now move into closed session. All right. Meeting of the Board of Education has reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will start with items from closed session, and I will begin with council retention. These items do require a vote. First report, the law firm Franzi Radalitz PC. Second report, the law firm Taff Stetanius and Hollister LP. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Board Member Zap?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Board Member Quazo?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's. I will continue with settlements. These items do require a vote, and they are: First report, workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Sandra Smith, case numbers 10WC18786, 10WC18787, 10WC18788, 10WC18789, and 10WC18790. The second report, workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Linda Trailer, case numbers 12WC40113 and 12WC40114. The third report, approved settlement recommendation in Chapman versus Board of Education, case number 2014L06107. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with items from the Chief Executive Officer, and I will begin with warning resolutions. These items do require a vote, and they are: Louis Himes, tenure teacher assigned to Turner-Drew Elementary Language Academy; Susan Steinmiller, tenure teacher assigned to Gage Park High School; Paris Winston, tenure teacher assigned to Richard J. Oglesby Elementary School. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with items from the Board. These items do require a vote. The first report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Mario Booker, tenure teacher assigned to Andrew Carnegie Elementary School, and I would like to note for the record that this resolution accepts in part and rejects in part the hearing officer's recommendation. The second report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel, and the third report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss a probationary-appointed teacher. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that the Board, then on March 20th, the Board members and the Office of the Board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss a probationary-appointed teacher pursuant to Board Rule 4-7B2B and 105ILCS5/34-84. Her recommendation included the name of the teacher and the reason. She also noted that the teacher affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution, and, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I believe Dr. Beenan has a motion, please.
I move that the Board adopt the minutes of the closed-session meeting of February 25th, 2015, pursuant to Section 2, Period 06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed-session meeting held on February 25th, 2015 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with the roll call. Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Board Member Zap?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Board Member Quazo?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's, and I believe Board Member Zap has a motion, please.
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of February 25th, 2015, prepared by the Board Secretary, be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06B of the Open Meetings Act.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Board Member Zap?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Board Member Quazo?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's. I will continue with one real estate item. This item does require a vote, and it is approved termination of lease with 300 North Elizabeth LLC, 4320 North Elizabeth Street. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now proceed with items from the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda, and I will begin with resolutions. These items do require a vote, and they are RS1 and RS2. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. I will continue with a communication. This item does not require a vote. This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, April 22nd, I want to say, 2015, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 125 South, I'm sorry, 42 West Madison Street Garden Level Board Room. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 for the April 22nd board meeting. The open registration will begin... Let me clarify that date, Mr. President. On April 13th and close on Friday, April 17th at 5:00 p.m. And the individuals can register online, by phone, or in person, and the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated in the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 registered speakers. Mr. President, I'll continue with additional items on the public agenda, and they are EX1, 2, OP1, PR1. For the record, I would like to note abstentions for President Vitale on PR1, as well as Dr. Ascoitia on PR1, PR2. Moving on to PR3, 4, 5, PR6, 7, and 8, PR9, 10, and 11, PR12 and 13, PR14, 15. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, and I will continue with additional items on the public agenda that do not require a vote, and they are EX3, EX4, and AR1. And, Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the Board.
Madam Secretary, please mark, received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. President, and there are no further items on the public agenda.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.